Morning, everybody.
Morning.
It is September the 12th, about eight thirty-five. And this is the first of the public hearings for the twenty twenty-three tax rate for the county proposing uh, point four seven zero 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 flat. Okay. So what we'll do is open up the floor. Anybody, it is a public hearings. If anybody has anything they would like to discuss, you're more than welcome to discuss it now. Yes, sir. Come on up in. Scott, how you doing?
Doing good.
All righty.
I'm Scott Swiger. I was the city manager with the city of Cleveland and the mayor's with me here today as well. And I know we had sent in a letter a month ago or so from the city council where we have approved a letter from the mayor and the council saying that I actually was requesting additional funding. As you all know, we provide fire and EMS services for the north part of the county through our, through our city fire department. And we also do dispatching for a lot of the north side of the county. We are our police department. And, and as we all are working on our budgets, everything is tight and we understand that, you know. And one of the things that we have come to see is that the cost for our fire services and dispatchings, as you all see, is going up and it continues to rise. And so we have been receiving ninety-one thousand dollars from the county to help for those services for those last several years. However, as expenses go up, our expenses have risen as well. And so for a fact, our cost of the last three years averaged about four hundred thousand dollars a year to provide services to those residents outside of the city, but within the county. And so we are here to ask that, one, for additional funding to help us with that. Because we too are having to do some major cuts. And unfortunately, if we don't get this money, we're going to have to do some additional cuts and services in our, in our city. And what we're asking for is that we just continue to monitor this because, as you all know, the county, especially on the north side and the Plum Grove area of Cleveland, it's all growing right now. We continue to see growth and it's continuing to bring more and more services to us. We had yesterday morning, we were at a celebration. We had two fires in Plum Grove area, you know. And then right afterwards, we had one in Targetton that, well, I understand Targetton got paged out twice. Nobody was able to show up. So we got paged out to go fight the fire in Targetton, you know, which we're happy to do that. You know, I think it's a great partnership that we have between the city and the county. But we do have some struggles. We do have a new fire station that we're bringing on to help provide additional services that we need for our residents and of course, those outside the county or outside the city that we're servicing as well. And we do, because of the great increase in need, we have paid fire now. And so we've been blessed the last three years to have a safer grant, which is paying a hundred percent for our paid firemen the last three years. However, that, it comes to an end in November. And so that's about a million dollar ticket that we're going to have to absorb starting this November every year, which is again, as part of that increase that we're seeing, that we're going to have to take on. And because of that, those are the same people that fight those fires and helping to respond out in the county outside of city limits. And so what the county or what the city has asked for is that y'all to consider, strongly consider to increase that ninety-one thousand to four hundred thousand, which is what we've seen our costs being allocated to the county residents outside of city limits for the last three years. But also keeping it up in mind as we continue to move forward, let's just keep continuing to monitor this and watch this. Because as things grow, and we're seeing that countywide, especially in our area, that we're seeing a lot of growth. And that means a lot more fires, a lot more emergencies, a lot more services that we're having to provide. And so we just need to continue to watch that. For a fact, based on our budget for next year, well, we're estimating our cost to be contributing to the county just for the county services, about six hundred thousand. So we're asking for four hundred based on the last three years. But with the new fire and everything, the new safer grant going out expiring and what we're budgeting for, our services that will be provided to the county is really more like six hundred thousand for next year. And we're at this point, we just wanted to use our, what's, what we know for sure is the past. We also know it's going to be pretty good right now. We're just asking for the four hundred thousand that's costing us in the past to kind of move forward. But to continue to reevaluate this as this continues to grow. So, and we just again, wanted to say thank you, partner with you. But I know you've all got the letters. If you don't, I have a little coffee here that are wrong with me. But if you had any questions, I'd be happy to address that as well at this time.
Anybody got any questions? Sure.
It's from your last name.
Swiger. It's S W I G E R T. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate Scott.
Thank you.
Mayor, thanks for coming today. Stand up, everybody knows, I mean, Dan Carp, I mean, it, you just came in in May.
Flashback when I came in here.
Yeah.
A few years ago, I was downstairs and I came, I got picked on by a friend jury. And that ended up in like nine months. So when I had to leave here, the first thing I thought about, wait a minute.
We're going to do a miss, not keep you all day today.
This crisis.
Yes.
We appreciate the work that you all do. And we truly understand, you know, because y'all are pretty much facing the same issues that we're facing.
We are. Yeah. We all got to manage. That's just how it works. Yeah. All right. Leon, you there?
What's up?
I don't know. You got any questions? You know, David's here and Bruce and Greg and I, I didn't see you. So I just was going to see if you had any questions you wanted to ask the guys.
No, I'm fine. Fine.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Fielder. Good Lord. Hey, how you doing there?
Good to see you all.
Good to see you. Yeah. Chief, I see y'all in the back. Got anything to add today? Okay. All right. Well, it's quarter till. Let's go ahead and move on to the, we'll close this one out. Love that. Move on to the public hearing on the proposed budget. At this time, now I'm going to explain this proposed budget. For those of y'all that are curious, it, we had version one that came out a while back. And what you've seen in there was not the whole picture. Because we're, when we designed that first version, we don't have all of our numbers in, you know, from, actually, we didn't have our certified tax rule from the CAD. You know, at that time, we're just, we're building a budget somehow. And then, then we finally get our certified tax rule in, then get our competition in, uh, from the comm controller. And then it goes over to Mr. Brown's office and Ricky gets his calculator out and works up the numbers. And that's to find a percentage, at least for the, the tax rate itself. And in the meantime, we're still building a budget somehow. And so everything that we're trying to do was not reflected in that version one. Version two is not out yet. So actually, the, the meeting this morning is just to discuss anything in the version one. Uh, version two, I'm hoping will be ready by Friday. But it just takes a while to get all our information in from the state. And as y'all know, the legislature was in session this year, which is always scary because you don't know what's going to happen. And they finally, I think, except for special sessions that may be called, uh, we're at it. Our, at least at our information end that we need to complete a budget and get it ready for y'all to review. So any questions? I do know in the first budget, there was a three percent across the board consideration for the employees. And the second budget, there's a five percent across the board. Uh, COLA is what I would call it for the employees. But it's for every employee. And it, uh, main, the main gist of that consideration would be you want to keep good people. And I think we have a pretty good team together throughout the county. And Sheriff, your, your side of it, I'm just going to call you out because I can. Okay. Uh, you're starting to see less attrition and more people staying, right?
That's right.
Okay. And as far as your positions that you have, you're about to get them all pretty filled up, aren't you? Yeah. Okay. And now I do have one other question for you. What are we looking like as far as comparison or comparatively to other counties? Now, you don't even throw cities into account because they don't have half of what she's got.
They got.
No, Chambers County doesn't count either. Scott's from Chambers County. He knows what the story is down there.
Right. If you take all the counties around, we're ahead of some, we're behind some.
Yeah.
You know, you use Orange County that's basically about the same size as us. They're a little ahead of us. Hard County is a little ahead of us, but then we're ahead of Pope County and San Jose County. Yeah. County is ahead of us, but you know.
Yeah. Population considered, you know, when you look at the evaluation between two counties or more counties.
Right.
You know, what, how are we looking there? I mean, cities don't, not only not, we'll throw cities in there because they're always going to. Yeah.
We have some work to do. You've been, so all of the owners here, the, the law enforcement, the bars trying to keep up there. We can tweak a few things later whenever we get some businesses coming in.
Yes.
Get some more tax money. We'll, as you know, I'm not afraid to ask and you're not afraid to say no.
Sure, right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just the main thing on, you know, that was our goal, you know, when Leon and Greg and I came in in fifteen was to help law enforcement because we were lagging behind. We knew that. And I think that has been accomplished in the best we can, considering what our revenue stream is and what our revenue projections are. So you still have to live within your means, you know, regardless. You know, even to the point that eventually we're going to have to consider, you know, building a new jail. And I know what that cost is going to be. It, uh, well, I say I know, I don't know, but I got a pretty good idea. And it's not going to be cheap. But the other side of it is, we're going to have to do something. And we're prepared to do something. It's just a matter of evaluating, you know, what the debt service would be and what the term of the debt service would be. You know, interest rates are one thing. You have to live with what you can, you can get, at least our bond rating is, is really good. So, um, what are we going to do? That's, that's going to be in the planning stages. I mean, we had planned, or we're going to be behind again. And I don't, I don't like being behind, you know. Leon, got anything?
No, doing fine.
Okay. Dave? No? Greg? Bruce? No, we're all good. Okay. Nobody else want to talk? Ms. Harris is here. You want to talk about the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Man, it's just kind of like, I didn't go get my chicken foot out or something, you know?
I think if I put their backs till Friday.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Let's, uh, let's close out the public hearing on the budget. And if anyone needs to go visit facilities, there, there's a few around. We call it then.
Can you pause it without turning it off?
Uh, we'll stop.
Okay. You know what? Um, just, just cut the.
Even the live stream?
No, just cut the mic.
Yes.
Hey. I can't hear anything.
We have it muted.
Okay, we got it now.
We have it muted, Leon.
All right, I've got it now.
Okay.
Got a slide, crowd?
You know.
All right, so. Waiting on the seconds to tick by.
Okay.
There it is. Good morning again, everybody.
Morning.
It's exactly nine o'clock AM. September 12th, 2023. It's regular meeting Commissioners Court. So far this morning, we had a public hearing over the proposed tax rate, and then we had a public hearing over the proposed budget for the next year. So we'll call this meeting to order. We have quorum established. Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire here, Commissioner Wilson's with us by way of Zoom. So we do have a quorum established. We'd be at business for the court this morning. So if everyone would please rise, he's going to lead us in our pledges. Now, I'll get the implications.
Please face the American flag.
The Republican flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which one nation under God, you give this full liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
And if y'all would, before we start our prayer, if y'all would just remember yesterday was 22 years after the nine 11, and we all know what that was because we're all old enough to remember that. But I still remember when it happened, and I still remember calling my dad and said, well, Dad, now I know how you felt when Pearl Harbor was bombed. And his answer was, after about a 10 to 15 second pause, was not hardly. But that kind of got me a little bit. It's like, I had to think about it. And then you think back on it was we had, we had mass communication, you know, back there in Pearl Harbor. They didn't have anything but radios and newspaper. And so I could see his point, but I could also see the change that it made in the world and the impact it made. So if y'all would just have a moment of silence for those that were lost. And thank y'all. If you would, pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the, all the wonderful blessings that you give us, grant us each and every day. Lord, we thank you for these blessings that hopefully, Lord, that we can use to help others, to help others in their endeavors throughout life and in their endeavors to have a better quality of life, which is what our job is. Or that we can work together, not just on the local side, not just the cities together, the county together, but everybody, everybody work together. Lord, that's our, our goal is to help one another, just as, as Jesus was here to help us. Lord, for the folks that we remembered earlier from that tragic day 22 years ago, may we never forget. Lord, that for the future, may we always be cognizant of what could happen. May we all work together, Lord, to never let anything like that happen again. Lord, again, thank you for all the wonderful blessings, your grace, your mercies. Lord, for our first responders, may you please always watch over them. Please, please take them home every night so they can be with their families. Again, Lord, thank you so much for your wonderful, wonderful grace. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen. All righty. Let's see. We have notices and proclamations this morning. Do you have any notices or proclamations today? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. Ms. Janice Holt is with us today. Good morning, Harry. You did that. All right, good. Come on up and listen with us a minute.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge and Commissioner. Thank you for the work that you do here in Liberty County. I know it's a, sometimes it's a thankless job, but I thank you for your service to our community here in Liberty County. I am running for state representative. Hello, everyone else also. I'm running for state representative, representing House District 18, House District 18 encompasses Liberty County and Hardin County, Sampson County and East Montgomery County. I live in Hardin County in Sillsby specifically. I serve on the school board there, so I know a little bit about all these budget things that you're having to go through and waiting on these rates and all of that. That will have our meeting tonight over in Sillsby. But I just wanted to reintroduce myself. I met several of you and Commissioner Wilson. I did see you two via the Zoom hearing, but anyway, I just wanted to say that if there was a chance, an opportunity that I wanted to give you a call, Judge, if that's all right, please check us out. Please give me a call or send me an email. I'd love to sit down individually with you and kind of let you know my vision and see how I can be helpful for each one of you. So thank you, Judge. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much. And in the times we have, I appreciate your bravery for stepping up.
Well, it's all about our future. Commissioner Wilson, I'll leave one here at your desk and you can have one there. Thank you. It is always, it's about our community and taking care of our community, for our kids, our great kids. And so, anyway, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All righty. Moving on to number six, declare conflicts of interest. We have anything on here that would be a conflict of interest? Number 13? Number 14?
13 and 14.
You got that, Lee? Right. Move on down to consent agenda. Have any add-ons? Dwayne, anything? Yeah.
Yes, sir. On the payoff for Jesse Swarner, and the amount is slightly over what it actually should be. It should be $4,585 and not $94 cents.
What is it, Ms.?
On the payroll line, so they can examine agenda, Leon.
Yeah, how much was it?
Okay, $4,585 and 94 cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only the addition, but the change.
We got one, we got one more, we got one more. Lee has some votes came in, yeah.
We had some people start yesterday because it was a new payroll cycle. So I have audits and statements for Kim DeStriven, who's doing, uh, rub eight. Ashton Berka, who's doing criminal, and I've got two new interns working over at Elections at the moment, and attorney, and Karen Pannoni. So we, I've added the audit statement for those new employees.
There you say something.
Make a motion to approve the Senate agenda.
All right, I got a motion from Bruce, second from, went on to approve. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. That's a special name. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add about the correction on the addresses for voting locations?
Um, it, it's on there because I had two addresses wrong, so I put it on there that we could reapprove it and you can sign it. That way we get a custom in the newspaper.
That's just for information only.
It's just for information only.
Motion, Bruce, second. All right, let's move on to our regular agenda. And again, this is information only on number 8.1. ESD number two is ordering an election to increase here the sales tax by one cent. Sales tax, remember that word, sales tax, not adware tax, sales tax, okay? By one cent. Notices provided to the Commissioners Court per state law. In addition, Cleveland ISD, which multi-county election for bond, Plum Grove, Black.
Plum Creek.
Plum Creek, yeah.
Oh, that's wrong, I meant. Yeah, I should say Plum Creek, MD1.
Okay, Plum Creek.
And my number 10 was created in the last election and they're adding their tax or trying to add their tax in this election.
Okay.
So the ESD law requires them to notify the commissioners if they're adding to their tax. The others do not. We put them on there for information purposes because they are all either bond or tax related elections. So basically, we have those four that will be on the, you know, on the ballot along with the propositions in November.
That's November. What's the date again?
November 7.
November 7, okay. And when do you have to be registered to vote by what's the last day?
I think it's, it's October 12, 10, 10? I don't know. It's on our webpage. Our webpage is really good, so everything's posted on the webpage. But it's coming up in about a month. We'll give you notice in the next meeting of the exact date.
Okay, so if you're not registered to vote, please look it up.
Yeah, get on it.
Get on it, and that way your voice can be heard. Okay. Anything else?
I don't know. I think not.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Ms. Chambers on item number eight one? Okay, and that's in the information only, so we'll move on. You actually required. Number eight two from Ms. Chambers, discuss and consider the approval of the purchase of TextMyGov, notice management software for use by the Liberty County Clerk's Office for elections and required statutory notice functions, both regular and emergency. Cost includes a one-time setup for $6,750 and a yearly cost of $13,500. This will be paid for with Liberty County Clerk Records Management Funds. Pretty self-explanatory. Dwayne?
We, we you had this on the agenda last year.
I had it on a few months ago, yes.
There's, there's a problem with that. Let's table this.
No, 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 no. Okay, here's the problem. Since we did that, since we did that, and before we were looking at it, it was just a notice probably. However, elections have come back home, there is also step-stroke requirements that you can create an emergency plan and that we have an emergency plan that we can implement like that. That means we have to let all of our 100 and something poll workers know what's going on in an instant. We need to be able to text them and get information out to them. Also, we are required by law to allow people that want to curbside vote to be able to text us and let us know that they're curbside voting and they're out there. This software lets us do that. If we don't do this, if we don't do this, I'm going to be asking for an emergency meeting to consider other software to do the exact same thing because we have to have this for election purposes. If anybody else uses it, that's, I don't care. But this is for, we have to have this for election purposes.
My answer is still, we need to table this one, so it falls under the parameters of the law for using the county clerk records.
I understand.
I'm not going to argue this.
Okay, but we've this has been out there for a while, and this is, I mean, this should have been something that was brought up way before now. I am under the gun. I had to have this out immediately. So, you know, we're going to have to have a special meeting or something. This is not something.
Special meetings are okay. Listen, this, this cut and chase. Special meetings are okay. We do this all the time. But let's, let's get down with the, with the law, what Dwayne has to live by, what you have to live by, and Commissioners Court has to live by, okay? It's not personal. This is business. Let's treat it as such.
But I am an attorney as well.
I understand that, but today you're not an attorney, Lee. Today you're a county clerk.
Five years, we've been dealing with records management. I think this is absolutely 100% records management. I'm not saying that it's for anybody else but my office, but it is for my office.
Let's do this correctly.
Are you contending that this, that records management funds can't be spent for them?
I need to read what she, what literature she's got. I looked at this a couple of months ago when I sent it out. Now she came back with it with more information. I mean, look at this.
It was attached with the packet. Well, I was saying, why did you wait till now?
Let's, let's, we can have a special meeting. We can get this taken care of.
Matthew, you got any ideas? Give it away. It's okay. We'll put it on the next call.
Okay. Why?
We are training at the time of the next court. If we can't do it today, we got to do it soon for a special meeting, but I can't wait till the 26th. We are training workers on the 26th. This has to be decided before again.
Let's, let's give, let's give opportunities for them to do.
Okay.
What's court's pleasure at this time?
Make a motion to table.
You got a motion from Bruce to table?
Matthew. Table is just fine. Yeah, I don't see anyone to take this. But yeah, we just need to dig into this issue and analyze it.
So we need to look at it pretty quick and get that.
Realistically, all I need is 72-hour type of special meeting and just make sure y'all are here to go to vote and considering vote. Okay, this is not personal. This is business. Okay?
But I mean, all of this stuff was sent out.
Lee, I understand that.
I mean, it needs to, it needs to happen.
I got a motion from Bruce. Go here a second.
Matthew.
Yes, sir.
We just, I can't hardly hear you. Would you? What is your thoughts on this? Does this need to be?
Lane, I think we need to table this so that you can take it into it. This is a little changed from the last time we looked at it.
Yeah.
And so I, I think it would be worth everybody's time to sit down. Lane's promised you to do it quickly. I promised you to do it as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I got one from Greg just a minute ago. Thank you.
Okay.
I got a motion from Bruce saving Greg to table. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Okay. And we're going to get to you as quickly as we can, Lee. Okay? All right. Number three, Ms. Harris. Hey.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. How are you? Consider and approve the selection for the sick pool committee to be drawn during Commissioners Court. My favorite part of the year.
I know. Look, our box had to grow because we have so many more poolways now. So we're going to need two and one alternate. We're going to draw.
Dig, is he digging deep? Other question makes in here. Okay. One. All right, he'll love this. Brian Boards. Gospel Hunter, you're just a lot of that. Brian Boards. Yeah. Okay.
Number two.
And Kelly Kirkland, County Court of Commerce. Anybody else?
One alternate.
One alternate, okay. I like these new tags.
It's a lot of work.
Jamie Hudsford, County Court of Commerce.
She'll be the alternate.
The court, is there a court reporter?
Let you have these back.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Matthew, we need a motion to approve those names.
Yes.
Please, okay?
Make a motion to.
Okay, got a motion from David. Second, Leon. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four, now let's see, number four, yeah. From Ms. Harris. Let's see, consider and approve the official TAC HEBP renewal for plan year 2024.
Okay, so.
Might come up here a little closer because Leon might not be here.
So my apologies to the court for, you know, taking your time of this for a second time, but there are some additional items on it and there is a change from the last time we talked about it. So the court last time approved the 6.2% that Orlando told us it's going to, going to be for 2024 to be split between the county and the employees. So that's where we're sitting right now. But the good news is when the actual paperwork came in from TAC, it was a 5.9% increase. So that's great. So the court needs to just confirm that we acknowledge that the increase for 2024 is not 6.2%, it's 5.9%. And that you still want to split that increase between employees and the county. So that's the first thing. And then we also need to check the boxes that they want us to check for the vision and the dental. The dental has a 5% decrease in rate and the vision has some options that you can pick. My recommendation would be to stick with what we have for the vision. It's kind of the middle of the road plan. Everybody seems to be happy with that. So, but that would be the course decision.
Wayne, didn't we design the budget with the higher percentage, correct?
Yes.
Makes me feel a little better. Yeah.
Good news.
Yeah. What is court's pleasure at this matter?
Ms. Camp.
Yes, sir.
What's your thoughts on this?
And my recommendation is to stick with what we have for 2023. And with the court would just need to acknowledge that we have a 5.9% increase versus the 6.2 the TAC had originally.
That's what we approved originally.
Original, but now it's 5.9%. So you're just approving the, the new rate. Yeah, less of an increase. Right. And the, and to stay with the same vision plan and the same dental.
Okay.
Joining this budget.
You got a motion from Greg looking for a second. Yeah, you got a motion, Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? All in favors, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five from Constable Hunter, consider and approve in our local agreement with Liberty County and talking to the school district, provide the district with the services of four precinct five deputy constables for the purpose of providing general safety and administrative support to the district. Those are school resource officers. And David, you currently have three, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're just going to add this in the contract for four. And Matthew, you've looked over the contract if I'm not mistaken.
We have.
Yeah, okay.
Everything's good.
Everything good?
Yeah, everything's good.
And y'all have already passed this with the school board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion from David, second Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you. I appreciate your work. You bet. Number six from Mr. Gott. Consider and approve adopting the countywide policy restricting the use of county law enforcement vehicles from being operated or used for transporting law enforcement officers to security, contract, and traffic control jobs outside of Liberty County. Texas law prohibits the use of public funds, property for private use. The use of county vehicles outside of Liberty County for security, contract, or traffic control jobs provides no benefit to the citizens of Liberty County. Pretty self-explanatory, and I will open this up for discussion. Okay. Yep. Yes, sir. Come on up, Constable Halsey. I haven't, don't get to see you a whole lot, and I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
I was over here so that Commissioner Wilson can hear also. I agree that maybe we need to work on a deal, but I don't. Uh, I agree that maybe we need to work on a deal, but I don't think this, boom, this is a path of talent, because I know, I looked through the, I guess this is the policy procedure for the county, I've never received a policy procedure book. And so we wanna make a policy and procedure uh, change, uh, to do that, and, um, I know my policy is different from Sheriff Raiders and from, uh, the other constables in the county, and I think we had a short workshop, get around, what's a regal, everybody, well, we changed our policy because it's gonna be real hard for someone. Uh, Commissioner Whitmire, see if one of my guys have a county vehicle out there, he's gonna find, well, uh, can't go fire his guy, he can't go fire my guy. One elected official has no authority over another, so we need to get our department policies together, I think, before we just slap down, it's against the law. TMPA says it's not against the law, like, there may be policies for different departments. Uh, they say otherwise, that when a deputy leaves the county, he can't use the county's bulletproof vest, can't use the county's weapons, can't use anything issued by the county. Property is property, doesn't matter if it's a vehicle or uniform. If you remember, I, I've been doing this a little while, back in eighty-three, we could not wear the uniform of the department we worked for, it just had to say Texas Peace Officer, it got so pictured that nothing could be used. And it's evolved to where now that there are, because there won't as many officers, deputies out on the uh, roads as they can get, we have the guy coming in from one of the extra jobs and uh, I guess the, uh, the body in the ditch over on one forty-six, so I mean, so they're always in and out, even though they may just be five miles outside the county, there are areas that I think we should be excluded from a straight five mile, because if you say it's against the law, then it's against the law, in Liberty County is, it's against law in Tamarack County, it's against law in Hardin County. Then, uh, we're gonna, I mean, no one can use any of the vehicles. A lot of the change when you probably county law. That's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, I think there's a policy, yeah, I mean, I don't think somebody ever drive twenty and thirty miles to an extra job, they can get their own vehicle, but if they're gonna work for one hour somewhere, it's all the way home. That there could be some leeway, and I think if we got together with all the other constables and county attorney and commissioner, and we had a, you know, we could work out something that would be acceptable to everybody, then there won't be a problem of if someone violates it, who, who's got authority to discipline the person, you know? I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't think you can just change it right now and, and a blanket policy that we, you know, want and we're done. I think it's all more problem, and you know, these guys, they're not the highest paid in the county, and some of the better jobs out there that pay extra jobs, you know, they're short. Close, and then they go, some of them, you know, depend on that, I think you're cutting them off the knees when you're, uh, taking their ability to work some of these jobs. Just because of time, they, they start right at the end of their work shift. It's not, you know, they don't have three hours to go home, prepare for the extra job, on the way home. And, uh, all I have.
Good, we have, a few words.
Please, Sheriff, come on around if you would, so Leon can see and hear you better.
The, uh, Commissioners Court does have the authority to make this a rule, if they wish to make it a rule, I agree with the commis- uh, Constable Halsey and the fact that a workshop might be good, uh, to clear up some things, TMPA, our constable TMPA, I think law enforcement is exempt from this. Uh, I don't have that in writing, so I'm not gonna say that, definitely it is, but as far as the benefit to others, and a lot of people in Liberty County that work at the plant down there that have the traffic direction by them safely getting them out, safely getting them to the house, so the benefits could be there, plus it's benefits to the officer that makes a little money to put groceries on this table, but uh, whatever the commissioners decide is fine, if it's Matthew and them decide it's against the law, it's against the law, but from the attorneys from TMPA, they say they're going to war and, and do whatever y'all say. Thank you.
You gonna make that into a motion? All right, we have a motion to table and, uh, provide op- uh, opportunity for a workshop. So, Mr. Whitmire's asking table, it's a motion. You have a second.
Dwayne? Dwayne? Give me your thoughts on this.
Well, my thoughts, you know, with the welcome, you know, I can, uh, I don't know, took before the court, I, I do not think, like I said, bringing a turn, turn a general opinion in the law. Bring the law. Like I used Sheriff Raiders, for example, there's nothing in the commission court has been here fifteen where he uh, uses three soft thurs and vehicles inside of Liberty County, I mean, it's core function. Is the structure of the peace of Liberty County, and our each side's benefits is business. And my, my issue and the reason, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I can read. But, uh, is when you start getting these vehicles outside of the county, issue run into or maybe providing, like I said, a benefit to the citizens of Liberty County. Or they providing, and I know these guys, and I have had no issue of them working second jobs, so they won't hire them, but when they get outside of the county, are they serving themselves as a candidate, that's when it goes profit to the Texas constitution, which prohibits use of public funds or public property. And that's a attorney general thing. But that, that issue has never been brought to pass in the attorney general office, so that's a prohibition for public property and public funds for private use. And that's a determining factor, this is my opinion. It's for public use, I mean, public purpose. But this is y'all's decision. Matthew, you want to have a vote?
Matthew?
Yes.
Give me your thoughts.
So, I, I, uh, going to break, there is no uh, AG opinion that's directly on point here that we can all point to to resolve the argument uh, once and for all, it, it's probably right for the request of an AG opinion, I'd be happy to write it if it helped. Also think, but, but I do think that a workshop's a good idea, if if Commissioners Court is interested in this, then, uh, they will want all of the sheriff's department and constables to comply, and the best way to get compliance is to get buying it, so I think if they have input on this, and maybe we can practice in a way that, that, uh, we'll, we'll see it's a team.
All right, Jay. I'll make the motion. Uh, I'll second that motion with the understanding that we will have a in form of workshop pertaining to this.
Yeah. So we have a motion from David to say from Leon to table this in lieu of the opportunity for a workshop in the future, which there will be various other items to discuss in this workshop as well. Okay, not just the use of vehicles. All right, so we have a motion to second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries, thank you gentlemen. All right, next one, uh, number seven. Uh, considering approve the annual renewal of the statewide automated victims notification services savings grant contract through the office of the Attorney General. And this is just an annual renewal, that's all I'm asking for.
Motion we approve.
Motion from Leon, second from David to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, thank you gentlemen. Number eight from our tax attorneys, line border. Uh, considering approve the bids on delinquent tax properties as follows. Uh, number one is Tiarina. Uh, property ID is six eight zero five one for sixteen thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars ninety-three cents. Uh, number two, Nizami, uh, property ID is one oh eight three one three for twelve hundred dollars. Number three, Trifry, Tray Fry, Tr- Treffrey, Treffrey, let's try that one. Uh, property ID five three two, uh, four two one for forty-five hundred dollars, and the fourth one is Lewis. Property ID seven one seven one five for forty-two hundred dollars. Everybody had the opportunity to look these over and.
Looked all these over, um, make a motion to accept one, three, and four, but deny two. Yeah, I'll second that motion here.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from Greg to approve. One, two, and
One, are you?
Three, and four, even I'm dyslexic today. Denied two.
We're denying two?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, deny number two.
Okay.
All right. We got a motion to second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number nine from Ms. Soliday, come on up, Melinda, I'm, you were here. Oh, hey, there you are. How's the foot doing? I can't hear you, you're, you're muted.
I'm still gimping pretty good, so hopefully the doctor will give me some good news this week.
Uh, just don't go out and kick any armadillos this weekend, okay?
No, I can't kick anything.
Okay, good deal. Uh, consider approve the request for preliminary plat acceptance from Benado Lake, section one. A letter of approval from LJ Engineering is attached in the packet. Uh, is that pretty self-explanatory there, Melinda?
It's pretty self-explanatory, however, on my, um, my header, I did want everybody to be aware, aware that this subdivision is proposing to use pump detentions. Uh, but LJA states that it appears to be hydraulically sufficient, but I just wanted all the commissioners to realize that, um, it has a pump detention, and we haven't had any history with any pump detention ponds.
We have discussed the pump detention earlier, didn't we? And change those rules and regulations on that section?
They haven't been changed yet, no, sir. The only thing that our states is that they're not recommended, but it does not deny them in our rules.
What about the, uh, consideration of auxiliary power for a pump?
Um, I believe that they're, uh, proposing to have a, uh, generator.
Okay.
LP gas generator.
LP, okay.
Yeah.
Was that a proposal, or is that what they have in their plans?
That's what they have, that's that's one of the requirements that LJA spoke to them about was having a backup plan in case power went out.
What about maintenance on this one?
They're supposed to have an HOA in that subdivision.
Supposed to have what?
HOA.
Melinda, where, exactly where's this?
This, Benado Lakes is up off of, uh, ninety-nine. I don't, I didn't put a map in there, and I apologize for that. It's one of the, uh, ninety-nine, almost outside of Liberty County.
On the north end?
On the north end on ninety-nine, yes, sir.
From you, sir?
No, it'd be Greg's probably.
No.
No. David? Somebody go ahead and claim this subdivision.
It's gonna be, it'll be in David's precinct.
David's, okay.
Yes, sir.
This is just a preliminary plat.
Yeah.
It's just a preliminary.
Well, I mean, while we got out there, let's go ahead and talk about that.
You're actually, uh, yeah. Yeah, this is something none of us has dealt with, and what really concerns me with these detentions throughout twenty, thirty years, forty years down the road. And there's nobody left to there's no provisions for upgrades and, and to maintain these pumps for the big flood we have.
Oh, Bruce, where we're moving right now would be solar powered, I think. I don't know, what's court's pleasure in all this, it, uh, it is a preliminary, and, uh, we can go back and, and beat this one to pieces, you know, before the, uh, approval of a final plat as well.
I, I'd like to, uh, I don't know about the rest of the court, but I would, I'd like to get a little more information on this. The working mechanisms of this pump detention uh, versus uh, what we currently have, um. Melinda, could you, could you possibly put that together for us so we can?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Build a little better understanding of this pump detention, and could it, uh, I think it has the abilities to, uh, to fail, if you understand what I'm saying.
Well, and that's, my thought is, if we're gonna depend on a generator, and I'm thinking, well, what happens if the individual during an event can't get to the generator to get it even turned on, you know? Yeah. It's, it's mechanical, you know, it can fail, but you know, and, and like you said, we don't, we don't have enough history with these to even, you know, we have to really depend on, uh, LJA's opinions, they said it's hydraulically sufficient, but you know, that we don't have any history on how pump detention's gonna work.
I'd like to find out too, Melinda, what other counties allow pump detention in this matter, and what is their success rate, you know, it, uh, I don't wanna be like the proverbial calf looking at a new gate here, but I kinda am.
Right, right. All right, I'll try to get that information prepared for you.
I'm gonna make the motion where you table this for the time being, Jay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Leon, second from Bruce to table, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion does carry, thank you gentlemen. Number ten from Ms. Soliday, uh, consider approve payment to SPI that Schaumburg and Polk, for y'all that are kinda curious, uh, for the, they're the engineers for the city of AIM sanitary sewer improvements using Arthur funds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, Melinda, that's pretty self-explanatory, it's time to pay Schaumburg and Polk what they're owed, correct?
Correct, and Mayor Domain has already signed off on the invoice.
Dwayne, you got a problem, Dwayne? No. Got a motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Um, Linda, number eleven is yours as well, consider approve preliminary plat for Encino Estates, section seven. Approval letter from LJ Engineering is attached in the packet. Uh, of course, that's out on Ten O Eight. And they're still adding on, correct?
Correct, this, this particular, uh, section has a hundred and thirty lots in it.
Everything look good to you?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Leon, is that part of that, that part of your precinct, or is it Greg's?
I, I, that's what I was fixing to ask Melinda, I'm, I'm not familiar with that, is that on the east side or the west side of Ten O Eight?
That's Encino, it's still gone, it's still, it's added back to the back of their property. You know, they have one and two up front. Four, five, and six goes up north, but then the seven comes towards the back behind three.
I, I'm sorry, I apologize, my mistake, that, yeah, that's gotta be mine, Jay.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
You okay with it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. To approve. Any other discussions? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion.
Melinda, would just, uh, would just be the property that they purchased that's going to be on the north side of the coastal water of forty canal?
No, it's still back in, in the, um, it's still on this side.
Okay.
Still on our side, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, number twelve. Consider approve Louisiana Chemical Office Warehouse Construction Plans. Facility is located on the border of Montgomery County and Liberty County off Foster Road in Montgomery County. There will be no entrance or exit on the Liberty County side of this development. Approval letter from LJ Engineering is attached to the packet. So David, that's not yours, or is it Greg's? That'd be Greg's. Okay, that'd be Greg this time, okay. Uh, Louisiana Chemical.
They've gotten everything approved in Montgomery County and just wanted our approval. Basically, it's gonna be warehouse and offices, but like I said, there's no entrances or exits from the facility on, into Liberty County. from the facility on into Liberty County. They're all going to be exiting on Postoria Road.
Okay.
To be through Montgomery.
Good with it, David?
I'm okay with it. My next one would approve.
Yeah, Bruce, Greg, second Leon, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bill, are you familiar with this?
No, I'm not prepared with any of it.
Yes.
They're coming into Montgomery County, so I'm not prepared with.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. I'm a contractor.
Come on up here and visit in a minute. Uh introduce yourself. Uh Commissioner Wilson's gonna share. I wanna know what your name is, cause they'll probably have a question. Yeah.
I'm Bradley Williams. I'm the general contractor uh for the property. Basically, the property is twenty-six acres, but the only building that we're doing uh the Liberty County is already developed side, uh but the nine acres in front of Montgomery County is the side we're putting a twenty thousand square foot warehouse on. Uh pre-interior metal building. Only about an acre of the Liberty County is actually gonna be the detention pond. Um the rest is in Montgomery County, so there's no access or anything on the backside of the property leaving Liberty County.
Yeah.
And approved by Montgomery County already.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the burner number is already done.
Okay. So this is just more of a consideration for us. Uh we have a a motion and a second currently. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote. What's the court's pleasure? All in favor say aye. Was that an aye?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, uh considering approved request from Santa Fe, section five to accept roads into the county maintenance. L J A did an inspection and the road and ditches appear to be constructed according to the plans. Therefore, recommend the county accept the Santa Fe section five roads. Approval letter L J Engineering attached in the packet. David, that's your precinct. Do you have anything you wanna add to it? Even though you not gonna vote, but I mean opportunity arises where you can say something if you wish. All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Thank you.
Second from Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. And that was uh Davidson would stay on that.
David? You, I know this, I know you sustained from the vote, but are you good with it, brother?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number fourteen, considering approved request from Santa Fe, section seventeen construction plans, final drainage plans and final plaque with a variance request. The L J Engineering letter of approval is attached free review. L J Engineering has no objection to the requested variance. The engineering department is asking for your approval. Okay, Melinda, you wanna explain this a little bit to us?
On the uh variance, they're asking to do, use the existing channel C uh and it adhered to the pre-Atlas fourteen rainfall conditions. But according to L J A, the pre-Atlas fourteen maximum capacity is really, it appears to be more conservative, a conservative analysis. And L J A said that it appears to be just fine. So in other words, the pre-Atlas one actually was more conservative and allowed for more rainfall than the actual Atlas fourteen did.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Leon. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And David Goodstein as well. Thank you. Okay. Number fifteen. Mr. C, finally gonna get to you there, buddy. Uh considering approved solicitation of bids for culvert. She won't come up and tell us all about culvert business this year.
Yeah, current contract is the end of this month. We've got the request for bids for the new annual contract ready to give to y'all through the
Do you have us a list? A list of the
This is just for solicitors.
Way ahead of
I made the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion Leon, second from Bruce to approve. We do have a list. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays.
We had problems last year with our culvert.
Yeah.
Wanted to approve getting
Okay. Number sixteen from Commissioner Arthur, consider to approve E S D number seven's financial statements. And they are required uh by law to submit their financial statements uh. Motion from Greg. Second from Bruce to accept. Uh Dwayne, you got any problems with them? Angela, you okay? Okay, yeah. Uh call for vote. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen from Commissioner Arthur, uh consider and approve the following various requests. Twenty-foot wide road easement, a fifteen-foot building setback, a ten-foot utility easement from both sides of the roadway. Private roads have no maintenance or drainage responsibility for the county. Trade states final plat application only. Okay, I I guess.
This is Artesian Lakes.
Artesian Lakes, okay.
They uh their subdivision, we've approved all these things in the um, the path and the roads are already all built. There are no roads, there's the utility easements on both sides. And they're just adding more lights to uh to the subdivision that's all-inclusive in that. Chief is house and that's like six hundred thousand dollars, supposed to be around a billion dollars. You gotta have a key to get in there. We do, we have no maintenance responsibility for drainage for uh it's very, very nice place.
Make a motion.
Make the motion to approve pertaining to Artesian Lakes only.
Yes, and I ended that he does eventually have, they've built another stand bitch back there. And I don't even, when you start to develop that, you gotta go through the whole process and everything, a new, new beginning.
Okay.
But since this is all-inclusive is what we've already approved.
All right, so Bruce, you got a a motion to approve. Leon, you had a motion to approve. You wanna make it a second?
I'll second.
I I'm a little concerned. I think we we might want to regraft uh the language for the uh uh agenda items.
A little vague.
Yeah, if we can clearly say where the 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 property is, there won't be any question uh about the way they do the act.
Okay.
Um
You send my motion.
Would you consider tabling this and then we can rewrite the agenda? Okay. Leon, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion to table till we can get the agenda item correctly worded.
Uh can we get that down next week?
Absolutely.
If we have a special meeting, we can get done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Looks like without a special meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna accommodate everybody we can.
We have follow-up special meeting.
All right, we got a motion from Bruce saying Leon to table. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen from Commissioner Arthur, consider and approve the acceptance of the point three mile extension of County Route twenty-two sixty-nine with a twenty thousand dollar maintenance fee paid at the time of acceptance. And it's just, they're just adding a little short piece of road.
Y'all need to reword that dog. Okay, this is a, this is just a three-tenths foot mile. There's be some three, four hundred thousand dollars on double this uh right, it's right next to Charford School. Road goes down there, three tenths mile circles coming back. The roads are built to our standards. Fact, got actually more asphalt than what we're required. They gonna put up twenty thousand dollars uh cash for to the county for us to maintain the roads for two years and I should, if anyone wants to send that, that's why you'll make this on. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Bruce, second for David. Further discussion?
I heard Craig.
I heard David first. My, my, of course, my left, you're better than my right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen, I looked over this uh I'm gonna ask that we table it until we can get
You're gonna ask to table it.
Yeah.
We've got some stuff, we've got to clear up on that.
Yeah, this, we do work with Exxon Pipeline. But we also, this is not Exxon Pipeline. This is gonna be another company is gonna contract Exxon Pipeline or Exxon period.
They're paying for it, but we, there's things we gotta clear.
Yeah.
Make a motion to table.
All right. Motion from Bruce, second for Greg to table. Uh we're writing table a whole bunch today, y'all. Okay, um any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Mr. Dennis, I'm saying to you the best for last. Come on up here, brother. Uh consider approve paying the balance to A one telecom in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, twenty cents for installation of all network infrastructure equipment, Wi-Fi connections, phone systems, all IT work and moving phones from the old building to the new sheriff's office and annex. We're gonna take all the phones out of the old sheriff's office.
Phone system and everything.
So, okay, Sheriff, surely go get back. You go give her
All the things that Nick you could have. So, yeah, we're coming up to a final end of our lonely brand new sheriff's office. So this is just an approval of the final forty percent. Lock it out and we should be good to go this month.
Yeah. While we're all here, uh Chief Knox, I know you're back there. May you move. Yeah, don't do that. Yeah, okay. It uh, I know we have the radio tower.
Yes, sir.
They're about to be constructing it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so they had to pour the forms, uh the footer for it and such.
They given us dates uh the middle of October to have it erected, not wired and everything else in the middle of October, so uh we will see.
Middle of October, okay. And then we got radios, phones.
That move is started the last week of September, which this is part of a new jazz and hopefully by that week, we will have everybody as the admin at the old SO, at the new SO, uh so everybody will be there except for jail personnel.
Yeah. Okay. Um Chief, I know we talked about radios. Y'all got all that cleaned up as far as the new radios and such for everybody. Okay, good. So Motorola and H D A C and everybody's all holding hands.
They're all good.
Yes, I love it. So Sheriff, you feeling better about it now?
Yes, sir. Y'all did good.
We, we had a final phone call. We did it on Thursday, but I think it was about eight or nine vendors. Store up everything. Uh so it's been a realistic nightmare, but we made it work and we're looking forward to this two weeks.
Learned a lot of good lessons.
Absolutely.
I will say that. Now, I will ask y'all to consider this in the future, that uh Dayton does their own dispatch. Cleveland does their own dispatch. Liberty does their own dispatch. Why in the world do we have this happening? Why don't we do all the dispatching? And we don't have to worry about these charges incurred, but uh from other cities to the county. And especially just like they had a while ago.
I would love that, Dennis.
Yeah. I mean, we, we looked at this a long time ago and it just wouldn't fly because we were two cans and a long string. Pretty much was what we had to work with and now we've moved up into a whole new era. And uh it it's a consideration, you know, so.
To have a workshop on it, discuss it, because I know we're with uh Bill and I working on this radio transfer, all the radios that are out there and you know, the different stories we give, the first six hundred miles, if they're free after that, you gotta charge people. The people that are, you know, that are, they're on our system.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, like Bill said, meeting on it, having a workshop and figures, try to figure something out or just look at it.
Well, we look at one after the first of the year. Y'all get moved in good and and run all the bugs out, cause there'll be a bug or two. You know, good and well.
Absolutely.
Okay, we get all the bugs cleaned up and spray it, okay? And then come back and after the first year, let's have a workshop and and maybe get these cities to come sit down. Or we can sit down first and have a proposal made to where it would be advantageous for everyone to consider. But uh I'm all for saving money. But if we got the best equipment, let's you know, I I get various reports. I've got Cleveland dispatching for plum growth. I've got Cleveland dispatch from Cleveland. I got Cleveland dispatching for uh Tarkington. And then I got Liberty dispatching for Liberty. That's about it. Dayton dispatching for Dayton. And then you got the the consideration of emergency service, you know, like allegiance, you know, the ambulance service and it's like I I kinda like this deal where if you got something that hits the fan, I wanna go to one person and ask the question, why did that fail? Instead of everybody pointing a finger down the road saying, you know, we've been our own dispatching. We don't need you. Well, yours failed. Why? You know, so I mean, I'm just looking at what's the best answer? If we're gonna all work together, let's all work together. That's it, Sheriff. That's you know. That's unfortunate. I mean, after almost nine years of this, I learned a little bit about police and fire stuff. I mean, I'm not a police, but I'm a fireman.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, but uh, you know, my first uh ride at the rodeo was when I was acting fire marshal, which was scary. But you know, I did learn a lot in a hurry on that one. That was about eight years ago when when Mr. Wilson passed away. God rest his soul. He was a good man. But he did teach us a lot, but we're moving on further now, but I would ask y'all to have that consideration after the first year. Let's have a chat. Okay. But right now, we're just trying to pay the balance to A one. Okay. Okay.
Make, make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. You don't have an executive session, Dave, gentlemen, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And Bruce has got the motion. David's got the second. All in favor say aye. We are.